A special meeting of Commissioners Court of Grimes County, Texas. Today is Thursday, 17th of June, 2021. We are convening this meeting because the workshop meeting is over and the time is 12:24 PM. We are at 114 West Buffington Avenue. The meeting has been called to order, Agenda Item Number One. Agenda Item Number Two, we're going to discuss and take action on furnishing bids for the Grimes County Justice and Business Center. Mr. Beeler.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Judge. Before you and this, this here, and now...
Is that the one you're going to be working off of?
This is the one, um, yes, I'll be working with.
Okay.
Just to do some explanation of this, uh, there, there are several, uh, ways we broke it down. We'll start with, uh, where it's blacked out in the front here, right here, we're not going to do that. We'll just go to the full quote so that you can know what we're talking about. Full quotes, uh, this is everything.
Yeah, I'd like you to hold the sheet up so I can see what column you're looking at when you talk about full quote, quotes.
The one that says full quote.
Okay, that, the middle group.
No, right here.
Full, I got this first column in the middle group, full quotes.
Full quote, right there.
Gotcha.
And there's two of them.
Right.
And there's two because you have two vendors.
Right.
Okay, uh, so, the clear, uh, in the full quotes is, HBI is 218, uh, KI is 240. Then we, we get into the minus the roller shelves, um, HBI is 212, uh, KI is 238. Then we come to, uh, minus roller shelving, lobby chairs, and office seating. HBI is 166, um, KI is 175. You get to full quote minus roller shelving with body-built chairs, uh, HBI is 227, uh, KI made some ground up and is 228. The full quote with body-built chairs and roller shelving is probably one of the, the most, um, in my opinion, where you're looking at. HBI is 245, um, KI is 246. The next number that you see is turnkey quote, and I want to talk about that a little bit before I put the numbers out there. Turnkey quote means they will look at the CAD drawings, and they have, and they'll give us, grab your pencils and your paper and let's go to work. But there's some cost in that, okay? We're going to save, I called a moving company and he asked me not to give out his name until he, they, all right, can look and get a true estimate of what we're going to move. So he said it was going to be to 50,000 to 90,000. I don't know, I'm not a moving company. That might be way high or that might be in range, okay? I don't know. But I have to have a decision so that I can move forward with what I'm doing because that makes a difference in that. If we're going to go to turnkey, but here's the problem with turnkey. You're fitting a building over there, you're fitting the building. You're not fitting the needs, maybe, or the likes or wants of the elected officials or department heads. That's my opinion, it's my professional opinion. I will also tell you this, I've built several buildings and this is the first building that I've ever had to do something like this. Usually it's turnkey, um, but that was in the private sector, that's not in the government one. So, you will still have some incurred costs, gun safes, Jim, correct? Gun safes and evidence lockers were not put in the turnkey.
On either one.
On either one. Turnkey quote from HBI Office Solutions was 266. Turnkey quote for KI was 355. I was, I was kind of shocked on this, uh, through KI because we have a quote from them turnkey, but we missed, the, the quote ended March 23rd, correct?
21st.
21st. It was 316?
317.
317, I'm missing a bubble on every time. So...
The turnkey was 316 or 317?
It was.
All right.
And now it's 355.
Okay.
I kind of was shocked, and only reason I was shocked was, um, if I was a betting man, I lost that because KI is already coming out there. So I had thought where they would have picked up speed in the turnkey quote would have been the delivery and installation. I thought they could put it together. I'm not in the furniture business, but I missed that. I, I would, I would have lost money that that delivery, um, fee would have been that high. Um, so, uh...
There's, there's $90,000 difference in the turnkeys.
So...
So, just to be clear, turnkey is including your install, delivery and install, installation?
Yes, yes.
Now, does the turnkey include my roller shelves from my vendor or, or from what they want to provide?
What they provide.
Which neither one is adequate, so...
But we can deduct that out of it.
Yes.
If they so choose.
But let me ask the question since you brought that up.
Yes, ma'am.
We talked about shelving the other day, the 20,000. We talked about it coming out of dedicated funds.
That's your decision. I mean, if we want to do that and take it out totally and pay for them out of that, we can do that. It's up to y'all.
So the current shelving that we have is not adequate, is what it means? Do you currently have shelvings?
Right. I do have currently shelving, but it won't be adequate for the new building. That's why we got a quote for new shelving for the new building. And, uh, what these two vendors are offering is not what I need in my office.
So why wouldn't your current shelving be good enough for them?
Because it's, um, they're all different sizes and the new shelving, it wouldn't be enough room for the books that I need to store. So these shelvings will hold more books, they're taller, they'll hold more books, and they'll all be uniform.
And I believe we just did discuss like Commissioner Walkman was talking about, it was coming out of the dedicated.
Yeah, and it was about $18,000, I think was the...
That's what it has on here.
It wasn't wanting to be restored because I was part of the document, so...
So if you go that way, so if you go that way, then you're going to take it out of dedicated funds. My admin assistant has broke that down, uh, fourth column over, full quote minus roller shelving, and, well, with body-built, uh, is 227 versus 228.
Now, if you... I don't see that, Al, that's the column that I see is 212 and 238.
Yes, no, no, we're going, yes, sir, it's with the body-built chairs, okay?
The second column is minus roller shelving alone, right here?
Y- yes, yes. I would, we're, I, so since we brought up roller shelving, I'm just working my way back.
Okay.
Okay, and that's what I was going to bring up with, the next thing would be with body-built chairs. We, I guess we have to have some discussion, it is, do we want to go turnkey? That's the first thing, and your turnkey, that's going to be your cost between both is 355, 266. That means they go in, get in the CAD files, they put it, it, the, what that happens then is that takes, uh, uh, their needs, the furniture request, and that sets that aside. Now the furniture company says, okay, this is the furniture that will fit, and these are the dimensions, and this is how we designed it off the CAD. Now, they've got a little bit of more information now with what the departments need because we furnish that to them, so they can use that and reflect it back to, um, uh, the CAD drawing, but they don't know what they're taking. That's where the rub's going to be. And it will, at that point, you will add some, add some, some, uh, moving cost to it. You won't add all what we're moving, you'll get a little bit back because I, I feel that what they don't take to their offices, we can get with the used furniture company and have them come in and give us bids on what they would offer to buy our leftover furniture. That's, that's just a suggestion, that's not something we're going to do, it's just a suggestion. So, I think your, your questions today are your, your decisions today is, do we want to go turnkey? Do we want to pay, do we want to buy the roller shelves in a dedicated fund? Do we want to go with body-built? And then that's how you'll get your number. And that's how we have it broke down here.
I think it only makes sense for us to get the roller shelves out of the dedicated fund.
The next question would be, where is this funding coming from?
I don't know.
Because we are, what, almost $200,000 over what we anticipated with the remaining funds from, um, the amount that was budgeted for this building. When we create a budget, when we create a budget, we expect departments to work within their budget, and I feel like Commissioners Court probably should show that as an example to work within your budget, and this is, this exceeds it. So if this exceeds how much we budgeted for that area, where are we taking it from out of another area to cover it?
Are you take, are you saying that we're 200,000 over the 12 million or 200,000 over the 10.5?
The 165,000 that was placed in there for the furniture, when you took the 1.5 million remaining after the contracts, you had it broken down between, um, that money, you had it broken down of how you were going to spend it. We've already committed to two, the entry was one, and the alternate entry, that was approximately $335,000. We've already committed to the phones, that was, what, approximately 300 and...
335 were their amount.
$1,000. Um, you still have remaining your annex remodel, you still have remaining your storage building, which if you go with one of these bids, then where are we going to make up that difference? Are we cutting down? Yes, ma'am.
I heard you say something. Okay, at the last meeting, when you gave us the breakdown.
Mm-hmm.
That was a remaining $12,000. I remember that.
Yes, it ultimately ended up with only 12 additional thousand.
In that, we had already exceed, the renovations, I thought, were out the window at that particular point, uh, according to the breakdown that we had.
The renovations were still there.
Because of the storage building.
No, the renovations are a part of that. So you had the 1.5 million dollars remaining, we had the 335,000 for the alternate entry, we had the extra lab for 25,000, the maintenance building, storage building, I think it went up to 60 by 100 if I'm not mistaken, that was 400,000 set aside for that. The annex remodel was 250,000 set aside for that. The phones, it was, I had on her 350A because I believe that's what was on your board.
Maybe it is.
But, and this was just a copy from your whiteboard.
That's fine.
And then the office furniture at 165,000, which left a remaining of 12,000. You're no longer talking about 165,000 because there was a lot of unforeseen on there with the delivery of, or the moving costs that was more, but it's 300, you're talking about 355,000 at the most, it looks like. Where are we coming up with that funding? Why are we going to, we just need to analyze, I need to know where are we going to cut and if you're wanting to go this route?
The 165 is the furniture.
That's whatever lunch breakfast.
And we talked about it initially and had some conversation, Judge, you suggested that, that we would pull from renovations.
What I said was, we don't have to do it all at one time. We can have a little bit of delay on the renovations, but not too much of a delay because we're paying 30 plus thousand a year.
34,793.
Okay, 34,793 rent a year, adult probation.
That is, or I thought you were going that, I thought you meant the, if we leave one, one place.
It's 34, 35,000 a year we're paying rent, so I want to get out of Navasota and I want to get in this building. They're not getting in this building until we get the renovation done. The other thing is, we don't have to build the storage building over there at this moment, but we need to, we need to build it sooner than later because the building that we're going to leave behind, where some of these records are being stored at, are deteriorating. And I don't want to put any money in those buildings if we're not going to keep them, it doesn't make any sense. And right now, the, I, at least my idea, got to get the court's approval, but it's my idea, as we vacate those properties, we sell those properties. So some of the money that we would need for renovation for the maintenance and storage building can come from property sales. Do I know how much that's going to be? I don't have a clue.
No matter the ti, and no matter the timing of when you do it, there was 12 million dollars budgeted and allocated for this entire purpose, the Justice Center, all of that. So no matter if you do it now or you do it later, you're still exceeding the 12 million dollars.
And it's not fair to hold, and I'll take the blunt, but it's not fair to hold me to the 12 million dollars even though that's what we've talked about is the budget for this because that 12 million dollars, when we did come up with your predecessor and I, she and I said, okay, we've got a 10 and a half million dollar contract, we're going to dedicate 12 million dollars because another million and a half ought to cover everything. And after that agreement was made, verbal agreement, then we come in with 300 and something thousand dollars in the phone system, then we come in with, we're going to need more. Uh, we did a revamping of, I think originally we had what, 400,000 for furniture and that sort of?
Yes.
Business in the 10.5 contract, so then the thought was, okay, the wants and needs is...
Not in the 10.5.
It was in the 12, 12?
Yes.
In the 12 million, anyway.
Right.
So Jesse, I understand, and it would be real nice if we could hold to that 12 million dollar budget, and I think we're doing everything we possibly can, but costs, since this project has started, costs have gone up. I'm okay to delay some of this process, but at the end of the day, if we have to go over 12 million dollars to get the entire job done, we need to do that.
Okay, and I...
And you asked the question, where does the money come from?
Well, the budget process and we made that decision.
Sir?
We can, we, we're, we're starting our budget process.
I understand.
And also, kind of incorporate...
You already have a 220,000 increase already from, uh, this year to next year's on your budget, from retirement and from insurance. I just want to make sure you guys are seeing the bigger picture and not just now and where we're at right now, so...
Well, and also other means of, you know, tax notes if we, because that was one of our, you know, look into when we actually created the 12 million budget, was, you know, going into a tax note if we needed to.
I think what, and I understand what you're saying, I hear you, and I hear you.
Do you understand me though?
I understand, but...
Okay, and you know how, I'm not asking you to agree, but I just...
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, all right.
But, but I, if we're going with cutting something down to keep this in line, and we talked about, uh, storage, or we talked about renovations, back to storage, and that's what I heard you say a while ago, where are we now on the storage building?
I gotta get, I gotta get through one process, I got it drawn up.
But what I'm saying is...
Now I'm ready to send it out.
There was no decision made on the size of it.
60 by 100. That's what will fit, what will fit the needs of the elected officials that came, um, and said that that's what they have now, that's what they need when they go for it.
When did we make that decision?
We, we haven't, that was, that was the last that I was supposed to draw up. Now, I had commit, I had you want me to go to the 24 by 24 that was way back, I had you at 60 by 100, but you didn't want me to do any of the work, so that's...
Well, you had, you didn't, you didn't have me. I'm straightening that up. You were supposed to come in with some, uh, amounts.
Absolutely.
We never, ever got the bids.
Haven't, haven't had...
Okay, so I couldn't commit anything, not knowing.
No, this is what you want from me.
Yes.
But in the mid, and he wants me at 60 by 100 using my vendors, and he didn't really tell me what he wanted, and he told me, well, let's do, um, a 40 by 80, I believe it was.
Yeah, where it was at one point.
Yeah, where it was at one point in time.
So where is the 40 by 80? What was that number like? Because we're looking right now for some.
I haven't got any of these numbers.
Well, it goes back to what the auditor is saying. It wasn't way back. It may feel like it was way back, but the original thought and plan behind the storage building was a 24 by 24 building with a budget of 250,000.
Yes, sir.
That was decided upon.
Yes, sir.
And now we're at a 60 by 100, and we're coming in here with 350,000 worth of furniture costs?
So, I, might not be the options you guys want, but if you go, um, to the 1, 2, 3, it, uh, column is 166, 788, 490, 49 cents, it's minus roller shelving, lobby chairs, and office seating, we got that covered. You guys just take your own chairs.
But that's not, that's not even including the moving costs.
No, we've never, we, this court and that judge has never, ever talked about moving costs.
We need a reason.
Even, even when it was the 12 million was decided on, we never talked. I stood right here and up in the district clerk and went, stop guys, there's extra cost. And, and I said, moving cost, personnel cost, I said that. So, to hold him to the moving cost is it, we haven't talked about it. We ha, and this whole, and this whole thing...
We talked about it, we didn't commit to it. We talked about it because I talked to you about it.
Oh, we have talked.
Okay.
But the court...
And we talked about it.
We have talked, we have talked, we have talked, and we have talked. But as a whole, to make a decision, it's never been decided, it's never been, now that we're getting closer, it's, yeah...
Which is much like the storage building.
So, I mean, we haven't, we just, and, and that 12,000, a thousand of that will come out, but now you're just telling everybody, she's going to pay for her shelves, and you guys are all taking your own chairs.
Well, and also I'd like to say, after speaking with the district judges for both, um, I don't think they realized that they, um, I think we need to discuss whether on their furniture, because I don't think they realize the cost of it, um, and, and that may be the same for Judge McClain too, the cost of all of that, and so definitely need to reassess his portion.
Judge Shani just said, in no way do I approve of a couch costing $3,000, I can get a couch for under 500. I don't want you to approve any furniture costing anywhere near that.
Yes, and I think it was just as everyone went out and seeked how much their requests were, it was a lot lower because you were going to various vendors, whether it be Amazon or office.
No, we didn't, no, we didn't have any delivery, installation...
Hang on, yes, that's fine, that's what our spreadsheet said at the beginning when we provided that in just a cumulative spreadsheet, is that that did not include, that was just an estimate based off of those requests. It did not include delivery, it did not include installation, didn't include any of those costs. That spreadsheet said that at the top, and we did discuss that in Commissioners Court, that in no way is this going to be a final number, but it got put into the budget as that final number.
Well, it, here's...
We discussed that multiple times.
So going back to what the auditor said, I agree with you wholeheartedly, we have 12 million dollar budget, starting this project off, and now we're talking about, we can't even, and, and the building itself will meet the budget. I feel, I feel fairly confident that they're going to meet their, their budget.
I, I...
The other part of it is, is us.
It's a variable.
And, you know, going to say, we can't meet our budget, so we're going to go sell some property, I don't think that's fair to the taxpayer. Or going and saying, we're paying cash for the building, but since we don't stay within our budget, we're going to go out and get tax notes, I don't think that's fair either. I think we, I'm in no way prepared today to make a decision on all these furniture needs. A half of them, I mean...
I'm, I'm, we'll have to do it within the next couple of weeks because I'm running out of time.
We, I, I got you.
So, I mean, unless you want people to move in and sit on the floor and take their own stuff, that's, I, I, I don't know where I'm going with this. I mean, I, I've already...
Go back to my constituents and look them in the face and say, we can't meet our budget, and by the way, we're going to spend anywhere from 312,000 or 275,000 up to 350,000 close.
Well, no, for furniture, that's not true.
The moving.
That's not true. We've got 166.
Are you going to move?
No, I'm not moving.
Okay, well then the moving cost for the 166 is 275,000. Do what?
You would add approximately 100,000 to it.
Motor cars with estimated moving.
Okay, here we go. I, that's, you've got to give me something to go get a quote with. This man's just trying to give us an range. He might get in here, I mean, yes, for today, that number sounds perfect because I had to have some, but how do I tell the man, we're going to move this desk, uh, no, we're going to take that desk? I can't get an estimate without a decision, I can't get, so, I mean, if you go back to your constituents and tell them, um, all county employees are sitting in, on the floor to help you, I can't.
There's not a...
Unless, unless, hold on, unless you just say, we're not getting any new furniture, um, we'll pay the moving cost, and we take what we have and make it work, and then fit it into the budget. I mean, at this point, I got your numbers, I don't know, I don't know how, where, how you're going to fit it in, but don't run, don't run me so when we get to substantial completion, and I can't get furniture in.
There's not an employee that I'm aware of that's sitting on the floor in any office right now.
Absolutely, I agree, so you either got to say today...
We're not in an emergency situation to make this decision today.
Okay.
In my opinion.
Okay.
Can I make a request that we make a decision on my roller shelves today because of the price? The price is going up and it takes two months to get them.
Well, I thought we'd made that decision before it was coming out of...
We did, but not an official court decision. It was just discussed in, in a budget hearing.
Right, it's not budgeted.
Because it was money out of dedicated funds. Because if we're gonna spend money out of dedicated funds, it has to be approved by the commissioners' court, Jesse, if we're gonna spend money out of a dedicated fund.
You don't have the budgeted, you don't have the budget for it, so it has to come before court.
Right.
To, um, to be able to be approved, to spend, to have the budget in order to extend it.
If you wanna go back.
Sitting on, I mean, I, I'm comfortable making a decision upon the quote for the chairs, I mean, I could do that today, but not inclusive of all this other stuff before we talk about it.
I feel your pain, cause I feel it too.
There's no pain for me, especially, because if we get a building down there and we haven't made a decision and it's three months before I can get furniture, that's on you guys, not me, I brought it, I, we did our work.
You did, you did.
It's time for you guys to get it.
I know it's giving you heartburn, cause you gotta make a decision, okay, that's where I'm going with that, but what I'm going to say is, when I start going through this, the, I, I, I'm just, I'm just concerned that a lot of people didn't give thought to the budget at all in their selections, you got some departments being frugal, while other people are being, you know, just off the chain with, with their, uh, requests, is there time to go back to some of these departments and say, you're gonna have to bring this down, or I believe like maybe to sit in the episode, you give them all the same thing, and, and this is what we're spending, and we're not spending another dime, you understand?
Oh, I totally understand.
We got stuff all over the place.
We got furniture requests, we put them furniture requests together, we have every department head and elected official come in here, at that time the court and the judge didn't say anything to them, so then I, so for me to move on with the process, I took them furniture requests and went to Jen and say, give me quotes.
I, I know what happened, Al, but what I'm saying is, just like she said earlier, we asked them to go out to various people, right?
Yes.
So now we have.
No, we did not.
You asked us to shop, and that's what we did.
No, well, I said, no, and you're not gonna put words in my mouth here, cause I was the one in charge of that, I said, you go to the website to get what you need, so I can put a picture in my head, so we can, these people can see what they want, so they can develop a system, I didn't tell them to go shop.
You didn't tell me anything.
When I went.
I, they told me what to do, I don't think I talked to you about shopping.
Well, I could be Miss Wrong, because I wasn't at the last furniture workshop, and what I'm saying is.
They were all told, when we went to the new building, they were all told, needs, not wants.
And that's what I'm saying, we got a lot of wants in here that are not needs.
But again, commissioner, this, this is not the first time that the commissioners have seen the furniture requests.
Could I be allowed to finish my?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, cause, cause you're throwing me way off and I don't wanna go way there. What I'm saying is, the way I feel about it today.
Yes, ma'am.
Some of these people need to rethink things, that, we are not built, the citizens would not be happy with this at all, when you're talking sixty thousand for one department, and you've got other people only spending about five thou, and I know people who bought furniture less than two years ago, big complete desk sets, what about those things? I know we did an assessment, but it's like it's Christmas around here for everybody, and I'm not comfortable with making a decision based upon, they can do better, they can do better than what some of the selections they've made, I, I, I'm all for new furniture if we need it, but you got people, we told you a budget of two ago, go ahead, you know we're gonna move, go ahead and start buying things, now everybody's just throwing everything in there and throwing the old furniture away like we don't need it, or y'all can sell it, or do whatever you want to with it, and is there opportunity, that's what I'm asking you, is there opportunity for us to visit with those departments and say, can you trim your budget better than what you did with this, now that we got vendors and we know what the cost is going to cost, that's just me asking, I'm just asking that, cause right now where he is, um, all right, take what you got, go with it.
If you go.
I don't know.
Your, your budget is one thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents, and you just tell them they don't get roller shelving, they don't get their lobby chairs, and they get their office seating, say it, say it.
What about the ones that are picking like, these three thousand dollars?
On one thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars, I have twelve, according, since we're sticking to the whiteboard, I have twelve thousand dollars off the whiteboard, I'm in.
I understand that, Al, I don't know why you're calling me out, because I'm shaking my head, but I'll address what you, I think you're thinking, it goes back to what she said, wh, when I look at this stuff, there's a lot of stuff in here that is not a need, there's probably a lot of stuff that is gonna get thrown away, that prob, or auctioned, or sold, or traded, that doesn't need to be, so we can get these things, and these are nice pieces of furniture, all of y'all, the furniture companies may be committed, by the way, thank y'all for preparing this.
And I'm sorry, yeah.
Coming up here, but, at the end of the day, um, and you too, Al, you and Jennifer have done an outstanding job, by the way, um, getting this together, you're right, the decisions are on us.
You're in.
And, I'm not satisfied with this, because I'm not satisfied with all these requests, may be in.
Okay, so let me ask the court something, then what did we do when I supplied you with the furniture request?
Wha, what do you mean?
What did we do, I mean, when we had all, we were here till four o'clock one day, and I was sitting right there, and I didn't, you had everything they requested.
Right.
So, did we not look at that and say, mm-mm, mm-mm?
No, we didn't.
Okay, so now we're, now we're bumping.
Okay, but in all, in all fairness, when we had the, the workshop, uh, department heads, elected officials, come in with what you're gonna need, that's what we told them, okay, what you need, and then, it's just like we've done in the budget workshop, okay, elected officials, department heads, when you're coming into the budget workshop, tell us what you need, and we'll get the wants in there also, and then, we're taking a look at what our revenues are gonna be, what the numbers are gonna be, and then if we can't make it, we gotta go back to the elected officials and department heads and say, you're not getting this, you're not getting this, you're not getting that.
Okay.
Now, I understand your frustration.
Uh, I don't think you do.
Yeah, I do, cause I'm frustrated too, because I'm going back to the, you know, the, the issue of the twelve million, and I understand what Commissioner Cox is saying, I don't wanna go back to my constituents and say, we can't work within the budget, well, this project's been going on for, how long, we wrote ground twenty nineteen, so we had a full year of construction last year, we're six months of construction this year, we fought COVID for a year, we fought the freeze, we fought the rain delays and all that, and along the way, and I understand that our contractor, Collier, is gonna stay within the ten point five, but there were a lot of things that were not taken care of in the original bid, and the other thing we have to take into consideration, I'm going back to the storage on the six hun, uh, the sixty by one hundred, when we got the first bid, if you, if the court recalls, it was seventeen and a half million dollars, and why was it, because all of the storage was being put into that area, and it was a forty-two thousand square foot projected new justice center, and we said very responsibly, that ain't gonna fly, we don't have seventeen and a half million, or we don't wanna get in debt for that, so we went back to PGL, they brought it back down, we got it too, and the bids came in at ten and a half, and we said, we're gonna do that, how did we do that, we took a whole lot of the internal storage that we were gonna pay three hundred and fifty, three hundred and sixty dollars a square foot to build, which it made absolutely no sense to spend the taxpayer dollars like that, and said a better alternative is to your maintenance building, your twenty-four by twenty forty, twenty-four by twenty-four, expand that to take care of the needs, so we asked the elected officials, how much space do you need, and based on that, we came up with, and it was a crystal ball guess, we thought, okay, we can probably build that and put it in place for about four hundred thousand, well, by doing that building, we were able to take, what, seven million out of the original project, so Commissioner Cox, if we go over a little bit, I don't really have a problem with that, because I think we've made some good conscious decisions when it was a seventeen and a half million dollar proposal, and we brought it down to ten and a half, and I know you don't agree with me, but that's okay, I got something that I thought was very important that the court didn't want, and that's the additional entry over on Highway ninety, and that's three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar add-on that wasn't in the twelve million dollar discussion, so I get that.
Well, also, I believe when we, when we set that twelve million dollars, the estimate that came from PGL was, it was over eleven million, on what the building was gonna cost, we already knew we were gonna have the additional foam and potential for furniture, and I do not remember in that twelve million dollar discussion where we first set that budget, that the renovations for this building were in it.
It was, because they had every.
I thought it was placed in afterwards, after the bu, after we got the bid, it was ten and five.
Because Mary Nichols and I said, okay, we got a ten and a half million dollar contract.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but we made, we set the twelve million dollar budget, that was before we got the bids.
I agree.
Well, I'm gonna say this, going back to.
So, we, we set the money aside before we got bids, so, like I said, I think it came in after we got the bids and they came in five hundred thousand dollars less.
I can't be mistaken.
It was. And then with that, I think then the renovations of this was put in there, I don't think it was in there when we first set, cause like I said, it was an eleven million dollar estimate, and we still didn't have the foam, or the furnishings, or the, um, storage building, that was not part of the eleven million dollar estimate that came from PGL, so.
Correct.
So, I, and, and I pushed for the twelve million dollar budget and, and reducing their, our, the fund balance to about, what was it, five months.
Four, like four and a half.
And.
Which is less than what we want.
And hoping that, you know, we'd come in less and then, you know, we could add enough back to the fund balance essentially, but we wanted to make sure we had enough for all the undetermined things, but I did not remember recall the renovations of this building being in that initial, because of the, you know, like I said, it was eleven million plus, we knew the phones were gonna be around three hundred thousand at the time even when we set the twelve million dollar budget, and the furnishings, I think PGL had pulled that out of the estimate, and it was four hundred thousand dollars.
I'm sure it's in some minutes somewhere.
So, we, we, I think we put, put that one in there, hoping that we would come in under that, but I think the initial twelve million dollar budget included the renovations.
I'm sure it's in some minutes somewhere, because y'all had to discuss it in Commissioner Boarding.
Like I said, I thought it was put in after, after the bid came in.
Mr. Cox.
Going back to your comment about the, the original bid, I, I just want the court to reflect, at that time, there was still a lot of unanswered questions, whenever the court took action, and I think, I know specifically, I said on multiple occasions, we need to slow down, we need to make some of these decisions now, and the court chose to go forward with it, and here we are now, Al was jumping up and down saying the same thing, there's a lot of things in this, uh, that we need to have decided before we get into it, um, all that to be said, we're, we're right in the position and in the place right now, where we're talking about not being able to maintain the budget that was, that was created for this project, all of the projects, the, the remodel of this building was in there, Commissioner.
When we set the twelve million dollar budget, cause it was before the bid, I remember it was before our, the money came out, or the bid was actually came out.
Wait, okay, the, it's, it, we're in a position now, we.
We have to come up with a solution, that's where I find ourselves at, we may not want to do some things, but we may have to make some decisions, we have to make some decisions, okay, we, we talked about, and I know you don't wanna hear, I don't wanna hear my own self, but when we talked about some of this, we said, we'd go back to renovations, or the building, whichever one we said, so now we need to make a decision, either we're gonna delay renovations till we can do better in terms of money-wise, or we're gonna cut your building now, one or the other, but we gotta move forward with something.
Something, that's correct.
Uh, we can go back through history, down through the line, yeah, we, some things were not thought out, we were not always on the same page, but right now, this is where we find ourselves, we need to make a decision on what we're going to do, so we can, that's, we gotta pull from somewhere.
So.
We don't have it in fund balance, we cannot keep going into fund balance for anything, okay, cause we're, we're, we're critical, when I say that, I mean, I do not want us to go back into fund balance for anything, okay, so, we gonna get there, I've been hearing this all along, while we are there building, we are gonna take care of the things we need to take care of while we're there building, okay, so that's how some of this stuff has grown, that's why we've gotten a road that we didn't originally plan for to be any more than two hundred and twenty-five thousand, now we're at three hu, that's another hundred thousand dollars, so now we've gotta make some cuts somewhere, make some decisions somewhere, because, um, we just cannot be wishy-washy, we gotta make decisions, so.
Let me offer up a solution.
Thank you.
Um, I don't know if it's the right solution, I say that as the maintenance manager, not your project manager, so I hear that we need to do cuts, okay, so, I work, we, we get our furniture, whatever way we want, we pull this remodel out, I work on this building as my budget allows me to, maybe I don't get everybody in here, maybe Roden Bridge has to stay down there, maybe I don't get that half of the building, maybe there's, I can renovate this half for adult probation to get them open, the building's still up and running, okay, maybe we block that off, that, that hallway, and you let me just keep working it a little at a time like I have for the last seven, six and a half years on these buildings, maybe we set a priority in this building, and as I have money in my budget, I work on it, and then I can come back and give you a time estimate, when I think we can move adult probation over, back over here, I can do that in this building, because this building is in a quadrant formation, and it will allow me to do that, so that will pull two hundred and fifty thousand out, you leave fifty thousand in here for renovations, or whatever the, let me say this, whatever you guys wanna do of these choices, you pull that out of that budget, and I'll do my damnedest to renovate this building on the budget you leave in there, but I want you to have, um, in your mind, that if you leave me with fifty thousand, let's go with fifty thousand, if you leave me with fifty thousand, or you don't leave me with all, if you don't leave me with any, I'm just gonna have to go as I can in my regular budget, okay, just know, in budget hearing, and we had this discussion, I'm taking off on a lot more buildings, okay, but I'm willing to do that, but you have to come up with a number that you're sat, you, you as a court is satisfied with, and I will take, I will take the, whatever the remainder of that and remodel this building, and see where I can get, am I promising you I can get it all? No, am I promising you I can get, I will, I'm not promising you I can get adult probation, cause I don't know that magic number that we're gonna keep for the renovation, but I will tell you this, I will do my damnedest to get what I can get done in here and remodeled, if that's the way this moves on.
Time out, I appreciate your offer, but this decision's not on your shoulders, and you're not the, you're not the sole provider to solve this, because at the end of the day, and I don't know how the court's gonna look at this, but at the end of the day, are we saying twelve million dollars for everything we need to get done?
get done is all we're gonna spend?
At this point, we've already exceeded that is what I'm hearing, what we committed to.
Well-
Well, we've committed to something. We've committed to-
Well, it depends on your decision on the furniture and it, I mean, there's various decisions I also have to make.
All right, but what I'm getting at is, we got two hundred and fifty thousand in the twelve million dollar budget for the renovation. We got four hundred thousand in the twelve million dollar budget for the maintenance building. Let's go ahead and get the renovation going on this building. Once we get everybody out of it and moved over there, we got that within the twelve million. Put a hole on the four hundred thousand over there and let the storage and all of that stay here and Al, you're just gonna have to be mobile and work out of the unit area that you have. And then, once we get that taken care of, then we come along and then we build that new maintenance storage building. Here's one of the issues that I have, Court, is that the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost. So it's a good thing we pulled the trigger on this contract at ten and a half million when we did two years ago because otherwise, we'd probably be building the same Cotton Pitkin building for twelve and a half to thirteen million and would still have furniture issues, renovation issues, and building maintenance issues. Now, Jesse?
Yes.
I don't know what we have in our fund balance. How many months do we have?
How many months, right currently?
Yeah.
Okay, I can get you that number currently, but-
Do you have a estimate?
Well, I know with spending the twelve million, it was gonna, the last time that I updated it, it was taking us to the four and a half to five, I think it was five, four and a half to five months reserves.
All right. And, and I know that-
That was the last time we had this discussion.
Your predecessor and yourself like to keep a six-month-
Yes.
-operating budget. I don't have any problem with that.
Yes.
But sometimes, it's to our benefit as a court to bring that twelve, that six months operating budget down to a lower level because of situations that come up or emergencies or opportunities. We've gotten a twelve point eight million dollar deposit from the ARP that came in Monday. We know that's the Fed's money until we legitimize how we're going to spend that. We know that we're going to be audited on how we spend that, but in the meantime, we don't have a clue how we're spending it. So we have two point eight million dollars that we have to work with. We have, we have until 2024 to have that money committed. We have till 20 to 26 to have that money spent. Alls I'm saying is that the longer we wait, the more it's gonna cost. So when we talk about having to address our constituents and our taxpayers, I'm not gonna sit there and tell them, we're gonna slow ball, we're not able to make a decision. And when we do make a decision, it's gonna be five, ten, fifteen, twenty percent more than the decision we should have made back in June 2021.
Now Judge, I'm following you as far as a solution to where we find ourselves now. I even like the solution with, because we never got the numbers on the storage building.
No.
Okay.
And that, you're correct.
Let me finish, let me finish now. I like that, but I don't know how the AR, the American Rescue Plan money is playing into this, but it's very, very specific. I don't know how, where you're going with that one. But I do like the solution that you're proposing on, because we still haven't got the numbers. And I know you're tired of drawing the storage building, but I think that his solution is probably more doable, doable?
Absolutely.
And I, I, I know we don't want to appear that we didn't stay within our budget, but for unforeseen things and for decisions, we as a court, whether I voted nay, yea, or whichever way, we as a court move forward with some things that maybe we didn't plan on in the beginning. But this is where we find ourselves, so we have to make a decision on how we're moving forward or, or, you know, I would rather come up with a solution. So I don't know how you see it, but I think storage could work because everybody has storage where they are. You got storage with anything in your office for your books you have currently now.
I do.
I know they'll have to go somewhere for you to renovate this portion of the building, I think, somewhere too.
Well, no, 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 that's going, right?
These palm cap storage?
No, this is everyday, we use this every day.
This all is going, Commissioner.
Okay, so that whole room is going?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. That's even, that's even better.
But the storage they have is down there.
Yeah.
Down the road.
Okay, and I said that once before, it can stay there for the time being.
And Commissioner, it can, but here's the other thing that we need to be conscious of, those buildings are not in the best condition and we don't want to be putting a lot of good taxpayer dollars repairing buildings that we're not gonna keep.
I don't think we're gonna stay there forever either. We're trying to get to a solution.
I don't know what the life expectancy of some of them are.
For, for now.
Commissioner Cox, you had a comment or something?
I do. I think the idea of remodeling this building, it's, in my opinion, priority one, the entire building. We've set out-
Agreed.
We've, that's personnel issues. We got, we got a situation where they're not in the best facilities to be the most efficient across the street. And we're paying thirty-five thousand dollars a year in rent in Navas. I think, in my opinion, this facility needs to be rocked and remodeled with the budget that was outlined. We don't, we don't need to cut any corners.
Okay. How do you finish?
And it comes over furniture and storage. Once we take care of this and commit to doing this, then I think we have a legitimate discussion on the other stuff. But in my mind, we've got to do the things that are gonna take care of the personnel that we have in place because they're the ones working for the taxpayer. The, the records are, we've got to maintain those too. But as of right now, the, any more harm, any additional harm to those records is not gonna take place because we do have a handle on some of the maintenance issues with regard to that. The furniture, we've got furniture at the end of the day, we've got furniture right now. Do we need some new furniture? Probably so. But I, I can't swallow the fact of spending the kind of money we're talking about today on furniture when we still have these open-ended questions about what we're gonna do here and what the personnel that are associated with the departments are gonna do rather than buy furniture.
Can I say something about the furniture?
No, ma'am. Mr. Peeler?
No, I'm good.
All right, now you may say something.
Okay. As a taxpayer, I'd like to say that when we have an open house in a brand-new, beautiful building, as a taxpayer, when I walk in to look at the building that you and I pay taxes on, I don't want to see a Webster dictionary holding up my desk. I don't have that, but there are, I mean, I'm just saying, you don't want to put junk in your brand-new, beautiful building. Cut back somewhere else, but you want the building to look good, or I do as a taxpayer.
So do you prefer spending more money on furniture than remodeling this building?
No, I prefer spending money on furniture, but like right now, I can take my desk that I have with me, which, my desk, which y'all have all heard it more than once, came from Texas A&amp;M, it was free. We went and pilfered it out of their junk twelve years ago. But it's a good wooden desk. Can I use it? Yeah. It's old and it's not conducive to a computer, so I've got it jacked up where it works. But the things, myself, as the district clerk, the things I've asked for furniture-wise are not astronomical. They're, they're, they're necessary things to function in a brand-new, beautiful building. So with that said, I just, I feel like that everybody needs some furniture and there are people that have desks held up by a Webster dictionary. But those that aren't need to bring what they have with them if it's nice enough furniture. But it should look nice. My whole point is, our building should look nice for the public.
There are some furniture requests in here, Commissioners and Judges, that, let's just be honest, she's never had a conference room. So the, the added cost of the conference room, the conference chairs, stuff like that that we don't have, that's what's bringing the cost up. If we today would just say, get your stuff, we're moving it, all of it, figure it out, put it in your office, there's gonna be, there's gonna be quite a few empty rooms. District Judges, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah.
They have one little bitty desk and a table and two chairs. I've said all along that the building was planned for growth. Now we're asking them to outfit it for growth, and this is the cost that that brings. I'm okay with spending, cutting back maintenance. Maintenance, look, maintenance has been resilient for six years and still is today. I'm okay with later day, we'll, we'll, when we figure it out, pull that four hundred thousand dollars out. Do what you have to do here, whatever the, just don't forget about me when we get done with the project and leave me over here because that is a, that is a hardship, believe it or not, on maintenance, being away from there. That's okay. But when we come in under budget and what's left, don't forget about the maintenance and storage building. That's all I care about.
I agree.
I don't, I don't care how we get there. It's just- And if we had enough money at the end of the day, at least pour the slab while we've got a good contractor over there and get it done at today's pace. Put the metal building up, six, twelve months, whatever it takes, but we get that done. I want to go back to, one of the ideas though, that I presented or talked about, is getting these buildings vacated, putting the property up for sale because that, one, puts it back on the tax rolls. Because if the property's there and it's doing nothing, or it's doing nothing but costing us money to keep it up, that's, that's not acceptable for us to let those kind of buildings deteriorate anymore or any longer. We need to get rid of those properties. If we, again, this is my opinion, if we don't see a use for those facilities in the zero to five-year range, we need to get rid of it. Because in five years, you're gonna have probably mostly new decision-makers and a new focus and the county's gonna look a whole lot different anyway. So I don't see anything wrong with us unloading county properties that are not being utilized effectively. And we're in the process of trying to do that with two of them as we sit here today. But there are many more. And then those monies can come back in and replenish our fund balance to some degree. Maybe not to the full amount, but to some degree.
Judge.
Go ahead.
I just, I have an issue with that because that doesn't necessarily mean if we sell those properties that we need to use that money to offset the, the money that we overspent with. I mean, I've got a different idea. I'd like to see some of it go back to the shared department, buy some of those capital and, or make some of those capital investments we need to do over there. Buy cars, they, they're gonna want their offices remodeled.
And that's part of the plan.
But it's not, that's not part of this plan.
Well, I don't think we need to take on another plan at the moment, Commissioner.
Right. I'm talking about selling the properties. That, just because we can't stick to this budget, we sell the properties and we put that money back in here, well, if we're gonna sell those properties to do anything, we maintain this budget, sell those properties, then we can use that to offset some of those expenses.
We certainly can.
And I think that's all part of a plan for like strategic plan, so we know where we're going, which I have advocated for, for some time now, so that we would know where we are headed, updating the plan that we had. But I, I'm sorry, please forgive me, I have an emergency going on. I walked out of the room when you were speaking. I don't know where we are in terms of, I, I know that I felt comfortable with delaying, not putting off, not, not, I mean, delaying, but not ever revisiting-
Absolutely.
-the storage unit because we gotta have that at some point. But I was just trying to help move this along, to come up with a solution. I like the solution with the storage and, and no, it's not ideal all the way around for how everything has worked out. And we knew this in the beginning that when, whenever you're building a building, I, I've experienced it in my personal life, it's, it's overwhelming sometimes. But I'm sorry I missed what you said. Were you on board for delaying the storage unit or what?
Well, I mean, I don't, if we stick to the original budget that we had laid out, I don't see any reason why we need to delay it. But if, I mean-
Well, you know we already blew a hundred thousand, right?
I, I did, yeah. I mean, maybe we need to scale down the storage building, I don't know. But I know this is the priority.
Start with something. If we, if we do what we said we're gonna do, take the four hundred thousand, that could still potentially bill you, start you off. You understand?
Where did the four hundred thousand come from?
I don't know.
That's my estimate.
But it's-
That's my estimate.
It grew, it grew too.
Right, at twenty-four by twenty-four. Well, Commissioner, if you're, if you were building a twenty-five thousand dollar, a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house starting in January and you got delays from rains and what have you, that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house by the realtor staying, it's gonna cost you three hundred and ten thousand dollars today. That's a six-month delay. So when you say where the two fif, I mean, what happened to the two fifty, you're now at four hundred thousand. Part of that two fifty was when we were still in a smaller building. When it got up to the sixty by one hundred, and I still don't have a quote, but Al Cristobal has said probably around four hundred thousand. So that's what we've been working on, a best guess estimate at this time.
And it may be just-
Well, and as we can see, our estimates are coming in quite a bit under. Not saying anything to you, Al, but things change by the time you get it built. So our estimate, I mean, our furniture estimate came in higher.
Sure.
So it's, when you say, I just wanted to ask really quick. One, the art money has nothing to do with this, so we're gonna take that off the table.
Yeah, I didn't want to just-
That, that's, yeah, that shouldn't have-
That's your decision thus far.
The art money, well, there may be places where we could spend the art money for portions of this.
Thank you very much.
Yes, the fiber possibility. There may be places, but we're not going to just have that money in our bank and over expend just because we know we have this extra money to help us out. That's where, that's kinda how I took the statement. But the one thing I wanted to ask is if you're, if you're wanting to delay, where are you delaying it until the following year's revenues? Are you delaying it until next year's budget that we're currently working on and trying to utilize revenues from? Where, where's the delay? I mean, you're shaking your head, so where?
You, you, you're looking at me and I made a statement, so-
Yes.
In terms of what I was thinking is, we're having to make some decisions that affect so many other people right now. This affects us the least. And we may have money coming back on some of this. I don't, you know, I don't see, furniture costing four hundred thousand right now, so there's gonna be some wiggle room there. Even if you took the two fifty or whatever, I don't know where I got that number from, two fifty, from four hundred thousand, you still left with a hundred and fifty thousand, you know? He's never really got the numbers yet and it could be by the time we do get the numbers, although we're dealing with metal, wood, I know wood is up. I don't know about barndominiums and things like that, but-
Steel's up.
It steals up. All, maybe those prices start coming down by the time we're ready to do it. But I'm hoping that we get something coming back from the monies that we still have.
So, and I, I'm not best with math and I'm gonna tell you that right now, my, so we know we have a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars budget. So if you were to say, we know roller shelves are gonna be paid out of a dedicated, dedicated fund, we know that, we, that decision. Is it a decision that you want to go with body build or not with body build? That's a decision. That will break it down off how much we need. What's the offset of the-
What's the offset of the hundred and sixty-five thousand? The way you and you and you and you wanna go, what is it that we need? Again, I will tell you this. What is it that we need to get this decision done so we can move forward and not give mo- get some moving costs to see what comes out of that four hundred thousand? And then I'll have a number to shoot for. And if I go out and get estimates for the maintenance and storage building, I'll have that number. And if I see they're coming over it, then I'll just report back to the court saying, okay, we've, we did the furniture, uh, we've, uh, did the moving cost, but this helps me move forward with two, two things that cost us money. If I know what we have left, maybe I can go out and see what that building truly cost. And see if I can get it to where it is. Now, if it comes back that we only have a hundred and sixty-five thousand, and you know this and, and everybody on the court and judge knows this, there, I can't get a sixty by one hundred built for a hundred and sixty-five thousand. But it lets us move forward. We know that's there. And at the end of the project, we got a hundred and sixty-five towards the building. I'll have a better, better number. But this, in my opinion, and only my opinion, this allows us, if the four hundred thousand dollars lets us move forward with this and let, allows me to go get the moving costs now so I can get somebody in and go, okay, this is how we're going. This is what we're moving. Then I can come back and tell you how much div estimates came back. I'm all about.
If, if we, we have a hundred and sixty-five thousand in the budget on my whiteboard, okay? We're all agreed on that? Jesse?
Uh, yes.
A hundred and sixty-five thousand, okay? That's, that's part of the twelve million dollar pool, okay? So, if you, if you go to either one of the, um, hate calling y'all vendors, the providers, um, the ones two forty-five, two fifty-two. So, if we take that number and we take a hundred and sixty-five thousand, we need to come up with eighty thousand to do that bid. If we go with the KI, uh, they were two hundred and forty-six. So, if we take the hundred and sixty-five thousand away from their, uh, what we already have, we need to come up with eighty-one thousand, four hundred dollars to go to their bid. So, we're not trying to find two hundred thousand or we're not trying to find four hundred thousand.
But the moving costs.
Ma'am?
You have to be able to pay for the moving costs. That's where the extra money is coming from.
Jesse, I get it.
Okay, I'm just saying, you didn't mention that. So, you said you weren't looking at.
Well, I'm, I'm not there yet. But I'm just saying, you know, we're struggling on how much, or we gotta come up to two hundred and fifty thousand. We gotta come up with three hundred and fifty thousand. We've got a hundred and sixty-five dedicated. So, do we wanna come up with eighty thousand? Or do we wanna come up with a hundred thousand to do the HBI project for the turnkey? Or do we want to on KI, is that the best one to go with? Do we wanna come up with the, uh, what is it, ninety-five thousand? Yeah, something about, about, no, it's a hundred and thirty thousand to, to do their project.
So, uh, 'cause you do a couple of figures, um, the full quote minus roller shelving with body build.
Give me the numbers.
Is two-twenty-seven.
Two-twenty-seven.
Minus one-sixty-five.
Is sixty-two thousand dollar difference.
Uh, same thing with two-twenty-eight.
Give me the numbers again.
No, it'll be a thousand dollars more than that.
Okay, so sixty-three thousand.
So, if you, it, so not to correct you, Judge, but.
No, I'm okay. So, we're gonna do the roller shelves out of the fund balance.
Absolutely.
Out of the dedicated fund balance.
Absolutely.
But if you do the turnkey, you're not including the gun safes or the other.
I, I didn't, that's not turnkey.
Oh, I thought you mentioned turnkey.
He did, but I just mentioned that, uh, if we go with the furniture request, uh, the quote, the full quote minus roll, minus roller shelving 'cause it's coming out of the dedicated fund. And they do decide to go with body build, um, one-sixty-five, you said, uh, two-twenty-seven minus one-sixty-five was?
Sixty-two thousand.
Sixty-two thousand, if you go with HBI or if you go, uh, you go with KI, it's, uh, sixty-six thousand. That, that would be, plus, plus moving cost.
So, did you, did you do a needs assessment on what was provided? All the requests? You just took what was given to you and put it to these people to bid on, right? That's where this.
Well, I was instructed to do.
Correct, no, no doubt there.
We're the one that took the request 'cause we had a workshop.
Right, we took the request, we gave them to Al and said, here, these are the requests. Go, go see what this is gonna cost us, right? That's what we did.
Right.
But nowhere, going back to what he said, we say, we're not paying for reclining couches, we're not paying for logos, we're not paying for, uh, gun safes, we're not paying for end table. The list goes on and on. We have now, in an organized manner, what was submitted, referencing back to what Commissioner Walker said, there is probably some consideration to be given to the fact that some of the departments went very frugal and other departments didn't. To say, we approved this list, doesn't do justice to the whole assessment process. We still, as a court, haven't sat down and said, we're not gonna pay for this and we are gonna pay for this. Do you need a gun safe under your desk? I mean, I'm just going off some of the things I've heard. Do we need logo chairs? Do we need all of this other stuff that's been requested? Or are we gonna take what we got at Texas A&amp;M and, and carry that with us? That, that's where we're at. And to sit here and say, we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, peel the numbers away and say, oh, that's, that sounds good. Well, we still haven't done a needs assessment on any of this.
I, well, I can't do a needs, I can't go into her office and say, go ahead.
I suggested earlier and, and with your permission, or if it's still possible, if we decide who we're going with, which company today, go back to those departments, say, hey, we, we need you to whittle this budget down. Get back with whoever we go with. I think we, don't you think we could do that?
I, I, yeah, I think you, I, I think, um, if.
Is that, I mean.
Yes, I see, yeah, I, if, if all the elected officials use an open mind, absolutely.
They may not have a choice, you know, because we provide the budget for the elected officials.
Absolutely.
And we're required by law to give them enough money to operate their bo- their offices.
Absolutely.
It's not for you to furnish your, your, uh, office like you're furnishing your home. This is an office building.
I just need a direction.
Okay.
Tell me the direction.
What, what does that sound like if we decide a company and the direction we wanna move in and then we revisit with those departments that we feel exceeded the budget?
Well, I mean, I, I like, how are they gonna not, how are we gonna make that see? I mean, which.
You call them in here and you send them down.
But I mean, it's gonna, it could affect the bids of both of these companies.
Judge, can I make a comment?
A quick one.
Um, well, I did my original furniture request. I went to a furniture company, National Business Furniture, and the entire, my entire request only came out to, um, eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars. And these two companies with this same furniture request is over seventeen thousand dollars for the exact same thing. So, why, why is it so much more if, for, to get the same thing that I asked for from another company?
Quality, delivery.
Well, this, this included delivery and everything, shipping and everything.
I think Jennifer was throwing up her head.
Jennifer?
Your, your, uh, request changed multiple times, right? Is that your final request? Because if it, if it's the original, it changed multiple times.
It did change a little bit, but I can guarantee you it wasn't seventeen thousand.
Oh, I don't, I don't think that. I just wanna make sure that it's comparing apples to apples. Because I believe you added that.
Yeah, it did, it did, but changed a little bit. But again, it was not near seventeen thousand dollars.
Could we please, oh, were you already named?
Go ahead. Go ahead. You've suffered through all this.
Ask you, okay. She wants you to ask to, to answer to the question, okay.
National Business Furniture is a catalog manufacturer that sends out catalogs across the United States. And they do not sell the same quality of furniture that the two vendors who have presented you, to you today do.
I have bought furniture from them before and I've been satisfied.
But you cannot put it in a, you cannot put it in an environment like you guys are looking to put it in. You should go with lines like the two furniture vendors and the chair vendor presented to you because what everyone is missing here is you are spending money today and twenty-five years from now, all the money you spend is gonna be sitting in that building, sitting in that furniture and sitting with those people. I have the experience to share this with you because my very first courthouse I did was twenty-two years ago. If that courthouse had not been flooded, the furniture would be just fine.
Yes, ma'am. And I do understand you, you were right to speak up for yourself and for.
I mean, I'm speaking for all of us.
Yeah, that's why I say you were right to speak up for it, ma'am. Because I wouldn't want anybody to.
Because it's totally different. It's like IKEA versus us.
I just have one thing that I, am I allowed to speak?
Very quickly, please.
It's not uncommon for, and users as yourselves to come to us with a budget and say, here's our budget, meet it. We were not given that. So, should you come to us with a budget, we would more than happy, find that way, take that headache off of you, help you and your department heads meet that budget. We know how to tweak things, we know how to bring the cost down, that's our job. We're happy to do it. When we met with them, we did try to inquire, but you guys wanted a fair bid process and that's understandable, but I just wanna offer that just kind of.
And I'm the one who came up for the four hundred thousand dollar furniture bid for PGAL. That was me. They came to me, they had me put this together. I'm the one that did that for them.
And we, and we understand, but that also, that four hundred thousand also includes a lot of the bench work and stuff in the jury box seats and all that, does it not? And, but, uh.
You mean the current bid that you're receiving today that I'm installing in August?
No, 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 the one at PGAL. When they gave us the bid, they had four hundred thousand allocated for furniture.
Correct.
This is above and beyond that four hundred thousand.
It shouldn't be.
No, 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 no.
No, 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 it should not be. The, the budget created was four hundred thousand dollars for them to do this building.
Okay.
Building. Well, back to.
Al?
Yes, ma'am.
The four hundred thousand is coming out of the contract.
No, that was an estimate from.
That was an estimate from BGAL.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Okay, what I was saying, so that hopefully we can get to a decision or, or not get to a decision, whatever. But what I'm saying is, if we decide on a vendor today, have department heads, elected officials come back in and say, this is the budget, work with the vendors, get the numbers down because this is all we're spending.
Correct.
Does that change their unit price like, or if you do that? Because normally if you buy more bulk, you get a, a cheaper, it doesn't change your unit price?
Does it change your unit?
It would on the turnkey, it wouldn't on the other one that we did.
Okay.
Would that.
It could, it could on, uh, certain line items. It, uh, but there are only a couple of it, you see, um, high quantities like that, so probably not.
Would that.
We, you are purchasing off a contract through us called Sourcewell. Prices are fixed. The only thing that could be changed would be the installation because the number of pieces would be coming down from what I'm hearing. So, your cost on the installation would go down.
Okay.
So, what about your timeframe? Because your.
My timeframe at this point, until I know what I'm doing.
So, we do have the flexibility of reducing, taking items off? And then it's just been a matter.
Well, that's the whole point of when we were bringing department heads in.
I agree, I'm not disagreeing with that.
And, okay.
But do you have it?
But I, I understand that.
Well, we ask the question, it's like, is this a need or a want? And they're always gonna say.
Say, me, me.
Okay, I need only one person at a time talking in here.
That's where we're at, that's it.
It won't be my person.
I mean, I'm not, I don't know what each office requires. I mean, you don't know what each office requires. That's why we're, we're, you know, trying to, uh, rely on the department heads, elected officials. There's really no true way to go in and say, this desk is functional, it's still in good shape, but you just don't wanna move it. Or the fact that it doesn't fit the space that you have now, which is a completely different situation. It could be a brand-new desk, but if it doesn't fit the new office, there were, you know, I don't.
Well, yeah, you've done.
Yeah, I mean, there's really no way to truly know, know that unless you're in that office, know where you're going, so.
Commissioner Walker?
Could we make the suggestion of this? Call the emergency meeting or whatever you wanna call it, special workshop, whatever timeframe we need, seven-two hours. Get department heads and elected officials back in here and say, this, this is what we need you to do and we need you to get with them. Get a new quote, 'cause it's only good for thirty days, from what I read. Get a new quote and then move forward. Because right now, we have to get these numbers down. And, and I think them understanding, and I, yeah, department heads, elected officials are not hard. I don't think so. I know most of them aren't, but like, like we talked about earlier, you've got some that are being extravagant and you've got some that are being frugal. We need to equalize that, okay?
Well, I think that's a, a prime example with Judge, the district judges. They weren't aware of this.
They weren't.
And once they were, it became, okay, well, wait, let's reassess this. So, I think if you, you have no, I understand what you're looking at me for, but I'm just saying, if you bring them in here and you say, look, this is where I'm, what I'm working with, then I don't, don't wanna hear that. Then they, they may reassess it. I mean, at the end of the day, you're trusting, you need to be able to trust the elected official to tell you that this is truly a need.
Well, I didn't, did I already did that?
Yes, but we're not in a position, like the judge said, it's no different with the budget. Where you start out with this, they're telling you what you're, what they need and then this is all we have to work with. It came in over what we were expecting.
But we have a solution that the sixty-five thousand dollars out of the four hundred thousand.
But that, that Al was not placing some of the responsibility back on the department heads and say, bring your budget down.
Oh, I, I agree with that.
Okay, that didn't, that didn't say that. So, it, I feel like if we have beginning of the week or next week.
I've got a, I've got a meeting set in an agenda building for June the thirtieth.
We can do it prior.
No, well, well, I don't mean no, we can't. What I'm saying, we, couldn't we have one-on-one conversations with department heads or elected officials?
As long as we get to the same point, to the same agenda, goal, okay? I think one-on-one is good too.
I mean, I.
It did numbers down.
A hundred and eight. Two-hundred-and-twenty-five items have been requested, I believe, from what I've got jotted down here. And a hundred and eight of those requested items are chairs. Um, I don't, I mean, I don't know, but it strikes me a little bit odd that we would have so many, and I'm not saying employee chairs, I'm saying chairs just throughout the building.
No, you got, no, no, not at all. You have co- you have one, two, three, four, five.
Guest tables and.
You have seven conference rooms.
Okay.
That we don't have here.
I mean, either way, I'm good to vote on a chair distributor today. But whatever.
You're good to vote on a chair distributor today.
Don't look at me with that sad face.
Now, that's not a sad face, that's putting it back in your park.
Or we can wait till June thirtieth and talk about it again.
I think we could talk before June.
Is there a motion on agenda item number two? Discuss and take action on furnishing bids for the Grimes County Justice and Business Center. Discuss and take action on furnishing bids for the Grimes County Justice and Business Center. The motion does not have to be all-inclusive or all-furniture. It, the wording on the agenda is relaxed enough that if you only wanted to do a portion, you can do a portion.
Oh.
Uh, before you even make an attempt, I do have a question. How do we legitimately then get our providers to rebid?
Okay, so, if you do a, so, uh, you can't really do a, a chair, a chair, bit, uh...
You don't wanna break that out?
No, because if I bring, uh, um, Diane, I'm gonna use you, I bring Diane in, she's got two, um, lobby chairs that body build has quoted a roller chair, and she doesn't want roller chairs, she wants the, the glide chairs, the regular step chairs. And then I have to turn to body build and say, hey, deduct them, and whoever, HBI or KI, I gotta say, add those, add those chairs to your bid. So, to, to do that, and then, it, it, it just doesn't play into the scenario. But do what you wanna do, and I'll, I'll go with you, but...
I'd like to make a motion.
There's a motion, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we table the decision on furnishing, furnishing bids today, and set it for a future, a very, very, very near-future agenda, so that we can rebid the quotes and get with elected officials.
Would you read back the motion, please, county clerk?
She's gonna have to repeat that. Okay, she said she would table...
This is not my first rodeo, so...
Table?
Table the, the action item today on, on furnishing bids.
And reschedule another workshop.
Uh-huh, not a workshop, reschedule a special meeting to make a decision.
Uh, with the department heads? Or just the commissioners?
With the furniture.
With the...
On the furnishing bids, that's what we're talking about today.
With, with the department heads.
With department heads.
Okay.
And elected officials.
With the department heads? Okay.
And elected officials.
Okay. And what about the roller shelves?
Now, wait a minute.
Hey, can, would you wanna do a workshop first?
That's what I was gonna say, that, 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 that is not...
Okay.
Okay, so let me start over.
Okay.
I would like to make the decision, motion to table the furnishing bids for Grimes County Justice Center. Okay, that's my decision on that.
Okay.
Then I would ask for a future agenda, for a workshop prior to, with elected officials and department heads, prior to a special meeting to decide on the furnishing bids. And Cherie, you know how the, that word, that. So, my decision today is to table the furnishing bids to a future...
Okay, and are we gonna address the roller shelves at this time?
No, it, we, I don't know if we can.
Well...
Well, it was kinda...
I thought like a legit meeting with you was...
We'll do that, and, oh, you gotta know when.
I need to know something, like, before the end of the month, for sure.
Well, well, we're setting it before the end of the month.
But I believe we can discuss that...
That point's good till June thirtieth.
I feel all the, any, any roller shelves would come out at five twenty or five twenty fifteen.
Right, I didn't know if we could do that today or not.
It'd be twenty-one and fifty-four, but I don't...
Did you second?
I did second.
I got it.
I think Vanessa, we would, could get to that decision in the same...
What is our, do you have your calendar? What's our availability?
Mm-hmm. Um, June thirtieth.
If we're not available here, what about courtroom?
It's, um, I'm worried about your schedule.
What about the twenty-ninth?
Let me see. Please hold.
No problem.
Oh, gosh, somehow it ended up in July. You have a meeting on the twenty-ninth from one to three?
What is that? Well, we could do it at nine o'clock in the morning. Is the courtroom available?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so schedule the workshop for the twenty-ninth, and then we'll have it on the agenda then to make a decision on the thirtieth, hopefully. Okay, I'm sorry, uh, would you read your, read Commissioner Walker's motion one more time, please?
Okay, so, she wants to table furnishing bids for the Grimes County Justice and Business Center, and schedule a workshop prior to a, a workshop with department heads prior to the special meeting.
Actually, we just need to make the motion to table the discussion on agenda item number two.
Okay.
I have that by Commissioner Walker, I have a second by Commissioner Cox, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Agenda item number two is tabled, and commissioners, mark your calendars tentatively for Tuesday, June the twenty-ninth at nine AM here. And go ahead and mark your calendars for a commissioner's court meeting at nine AM on Wednesday, June the thirtieth. I am gonna ask all of the folks that are here, one, I apologize for keeping you so long, but you've seen the wheels of government in action. That's why we have drinking and drugging problems sometimes, but not this court. Sorry, we couldn't give you an answer today, we'll do the best we can, but...
Sir, Runbridge has this room reserved at two o'clock, or...
Yeah, and I, we, we both got three o'clock.
Well, we're, can we go over to executive session over in the jury room?
I don't care, you're in one on.
Commissioners, y'all could go over there, so we can take care of the third agenda item.
I don't, can we legally do that if the location is here?
It's, it's going to be, well...
Who's gonna sign up if you, well, it's closed session.
It's a closed session, it's gonna be a closed... We've already tabled it twice.
Why you looking at me? I can't do...
Do you need to tell your manager today or not?
We're gonna table agenda item number three to a later date that is successful to all. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion, we adjourn. No, I don't think it's a good thing.
Second?
He might come at a second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Or adjourn?
We need rushing, and we need to talk budget, and...